Or shortly, I should say. Mr. Chairman, I assume you're here to speak to this?
If needed. Joe and I spoke just a few minutes ago, and his sense was that these changes in red are acceptable to you. So if it is the case, then I think the only thing I wanted to discuss is at the very end, there's something under other in which we were proposing streamlining a money-saving option, which is when we make a positive recommendation, which means the client got what he wanted, rather than going to certified mail, that's expensive, it's time-consuming, and potentially puts burden on the client or the applicant who might miss that certified letter in a trip to the post office, that a positive determination would be sent by email with an request for return receipt by email, so as our notice that notice has been delivered. In the case of negative determinations, we would stay with the certified letter. And in the case of somebody who doesn't get back to us within seven days, we would move to a regular mail letter. That was our view of things. If that doesn't sound acceptable, we would not in particular stand. But it did seem to us kind of inefficient and kind of expensive to the village, sending a certified letter to say to somebody, "The shingles you proposed are fine," because they were just like the old ones.
Certified mail for negative?
Certified, because negative determination generally is not what the college wants.
Is there an unacceptable legal way?
It's not, the law doesn't speak on notices like this. There are certainly many types of notices that the law is very clear on. On a notice like this, the law doesn't necessarily speak to it. My, first, I should say that all of the proposed changes are de minimis, and if you adopted all of them as proposed, I don't think it changes one bit the law sufficiently that you could not act, tonight, if you wanted to do so. This is the one provision that I myself would not recommend, and I understand entirely the logic of the proposal. I like simplicity, and I like the idea of knowing, having some slip of paper in there that proves that we sent it to the right address, that we sent it on a certain date, certain things run from that time. Now, look, email does all that, too.
You mean statutes of limitations on lawsuits?
Yeah, and I, look, I can't say that that notion wouldn't work, but, you know, if no return receipt arrives within seven days, a letter may be sent regular mail. I mean, what if it's not? What if people aren't paying the same attention seven days later that they were paying the day after the approval? It's just, again, I don't say that if the board wanted to adopt it, I think this provision also would not change the law significantly, couldn't that guide? It would not be my recommendation for that.
Your recommendation is certified mail, period, yeah?
That's right.
Leave it alone, don't change that, that part of the statement.
You can live with that?
Of course.
Other than that, I think, again, obviously subject to other public comment and the board's questions, I think you're ready to speak, Jim.
Tom, any other comments to make?
Not at all.
Anyone else here to speak to this local law? Then I'm moved to close the public hearing.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I think I will, at the appropriate time, add taking action on this tonight to the agenda, so.
That sounds great.
We've had several public hearings.
Well, when we get to the vendor.
Yeah. Well, yeah, why don't we just do that? Where we go? Okay, that one's finally closed. And would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Now we're approving the agenda. I would like to add a vote on the historic preservation law. Any objection?
No.
Sally, you have something?
No. Tom and Valerie aren't staying, so we don't need to move it up to act on it until whenever we want to.
Right.
I'd like though to add the approval of the engineering services agreement with Plaza and Company.
And I guess just announcements by the board, you can talk about what the agenda is for.
I would like to add, just so we're here on the table, the agreement with New York City and the water, and authorize the signature of it. And I would like to add the authorization for Doug Kent and Joe Erhfield to rework the affordable housing law, so that there's direction for that.
All right, any other additions?
You did say I'm going to secure, to secure funding for.
Yeah, we're going to do the whole water thing.
Okay.
All right.
And the.
Anything else?
Of the historic.
That's already on there.
Okay.
Once again, doubling our agenda. All right, yeah?
What about this whole package? What, you know, with that?
I think that's executive session, I think, right, Joe?
I'm sorry.
The stuff, the stuff from Casano, is that executive session?
It's, the stuff for Casano is just one page back-to-back, and then it's the DDP stuff that came in today.
The DDP stuff.
Right. And Joe, I assume you haven't had a chance to look at any of the content?
I have had a chance to look at it. And it could be executive session if you want.
Okay.
It could be public discussion, it's up to the board.
All right.
I think you have to decide whether.
The Casano issue is that?
The Casano issue, that's what I was talking about.
All right, so I'll add that to executive session.
I'm sort of object, I don't think we need to add that to the.
No?
That, because it's a request for annexation, Jason.
Yeah, I mean, I just, anything that smacks of a potential lawsuit, it's my first instinct. But if it doesn't matter, Joe?
I don't think it does at this point.
All right, what does that, this number 14? All right.
And may we interview Mr. Murray?
Yeah, I thought we should get Leslie and Tom home first.
Yeah, well.
So after the.
If Mr. Murray doesn't mind.
If you don't mind, get our auditors on the road.
Let them go.
All right.
We can usually click for them.
Yeah.
Go through the agenda.
I'll second, all in favor?
All aye.
Aye. We do, just briefly, before we just get up, is there any other public comment? I don't think so, I don't see anyone. Okay, just double checking. So, please, join us.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mr. Murray.
Good evening.
Nice to meet you. My name is Tom Kennedy. I'm a partner with the accounting firm O'Connor-Dade's. It's good to meet you, Tom as well. This is Leslie Tillitson. Leslie is the engagement manager for the audit for the village. We conducted our, we're here to present the results of our audit for May 31st, the year ended, May 31st, 2013. And we've issued our report dated September 17th, 2013, so we're merely presenting the results right now. I understand that copies have been provided at an earlier time. I'm not sure if you have them, but I'll be very top-level with you on that. Basically, it's an 80-page report that includes many different documents in the financial statements, but most importantly, it's our independent auditor's report. And it's an auditor's opinion. You've heard the term unqualified opinion before. This year, they've changed the language. It's now known as an unmodified opinion equals the auditor's clean opinion. I'll explain the reason for that in a moment. Included in that document is also what's referred to as a management's discussion and analysis, sort of like management's take on the activities for the year, government-wide financial statements, fund-level financials, notes to the financial statements. And because you have some federal funds in excess of $500,000, you're required to receive an annual A133 audit. And what that means is there's two additional reports that we make as to your compliance with the use of the federal funds, and those reports state nothing untoward. So they were positive. And then lastly, we issue a management letter. So those are the two documents that we've issued that were both dated September 17th. So, very briefly, I mentioned that we changed the language. This year, beginning for all audits ending 12/31/2012 and forward, we have new audit standards that are called the clarified auditing standards issued by our governing body, the AICPA. And basically, it created new language that changed the language from unqualified to unmodified, but it still meant that it's an auditor's clean opinion, and that your financial statements present fairly in accordance with the appropriate auditing standards. It also changed what constituted audit evidence, and frankly, how we audit. But it basically highlighted and identified additional language that made it more clear. That's what we tell everybody. So having said that.
And they nod their heads.
Usually, the heads are hitting the table at that point. What I'll do is I'll turn over to Leslie for a brief general fund discussion. As you're aware, the general fund is the operating component of the village, and it's the thing, sort of what you can control. So why don't you speak to that?
Will we management letter?
We can, if you'd like.
Okay.
Okay, I'm gonna talk about the general fund. It's the revenue expenditures and changes in fund balance, budget versus actual. The schedule shows your original budget, which is your voter-approved budget, the final budget, which includes any budget amendments or budget transfers, and actual. I'm gonna focus on the final budget and the actual. Total revenues for the final budget were 2.45 million. Actual came in at 2.42 million, leaving you with a slight shortfall in revenues of $35,000. Total expenditures from your final budget were 2.6 million. Actual came in at 2.4, leaving you with approximately $266,000 of budgetary savings. The original budget and the final budget anticipated to use $200,000 of fund balance. Actual results came in at a positive surplus of about $35,000. So you add that to your beginning of the year, the village had about $1.1 million, 1.079 actually, add that to your surplus, and the village ended with a $1.14 million fund balance. And of that.
So I was gonna reiterate, so you were expecting to use, or use $200,000 of your fund balance this year, and you actually came above that. So you ended up having savings of $35,000. So it was a swing of roughly $235,000 favorable.
That's good.
Yeah, we didn't have to touch the fund balance.
So of that 1.14 million, it's broken out into three categories. You have your restricted, which includes all your reserves, your sidewalk repairs, fire apparatus, highway equipment. You have your assigned fund balance, which includes what the village designated for next year budget, and your unassigned fund balance, which is about $591,000. And that represents approximately 21% of next year's budget.
So your fund, your unassigned fund balance is approximately, would you say, 21%?
21%.
Last year, it was what percentage?
26.
So it's declined by 5%, but anything over 10, 15% for a village is quite good. You always have to balance the needs of the taxpayers and the village resources, and the fact that you're not digging into your reserves is a good indicator that the village is doing pretty well. Okay? Thank you, Leslie. Maybe what I'll do now is I'll go to, we also issue a management letter, and generally, what we do is I would inform you if you, I'd have to inform you writing in that letter and at this presentation, if you have any what's referred to as material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in internal controls. Well, this is really easy, because you didn't, we did not identify any. We do offer recommendations, because we audit many villages and many governments, so we have a number of suggestions that come up as a result. I don't think there were a lot. They're actually identified in addendum A and B of the management letter, which I'm sure you've had a chance, but maybe, did you want us, Sally, to identify?
Well, it's a question that relates to the management letter, and that isn't, it's a general question. We have accounts that are created, all right, I'll use an example, the 125th anniversary, okay? And Special Trust and Agency Fund was created, and it came in, and it was paid out. We have some old ones.
Sure.
Like Unity Day. Do we have a process, or is there a recommended process for closing those out if such groups no longer exist? And is there, how do you determine who gets the money?
Good question. I mean, did we have identified inactive funds in our?
Not, last year we did.
Yes, we identified.
Yeah, and that's what, I was looking at last year's management letter, this year's. And that's what made me think about the question, how do you do with that?
Well, I don't know if you want to speak to that, or?
Nancy does maintain a separate.
Yes.
Schedule.
Yes.
So she knows all the deposits by, I guess, quote-unquote, vendor.
Right.
So she knows how much, yeah, she knows how much to disperse, to that vendor. You talk about a timeframe, like.
No, how, like.
She's saying when the fund is, when the purpose of the fund is exhausted.
Done. And it's been sitting there, if I'm used for, say, 10 years, it should be closed out.
Right. That would go through the board resolution to.
To close it out.
Transfer.
And then, how do you decide where money goes if there's nobody around anymore?
They would just go back into the general fund as revenue.
That's what I want to do.
And unless it's like specifically restricted for a specific purpose, almost like a donor-restricted fund, at which point you have to extend it for its intended purpose, or go back to the donor to have them release the funds. But absent that, by board resolution, you can bring it back into the general fund for general purposes.
I'd like to move the mayor BS to write a letter of commendation to our treasurer. Our laws are just incredible. And I would like it noted in her file.
That's a great idea. Any other questions for Tom and Leslie?
Thanks, this was very easy.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming out.
Thank you.
And for giving us good grades.
I second Sally's motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
It's always nice.
Good to see you, Tim. Very nice to meet you.
A pleasure to meet you.
He's very good.
Pleasure.
That's.
Nice to meet you both, Sally.
Tom, it's good to see you.
And it's Tom, but.
Very nice to meet you, too.
All right, so let's see, why don't we?
Consent agenda, just.
Yeah, I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Just one question.
Wait, wait, what?
On the consent agenda, did Nancy review the rapid board line contract?
She's the one who suggested it. She's the one who brought it, my.
Okay.
Ready, go?
Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, let's see, maybe we should interview Tom?
Yes.
Because that'll only take five minutes. And probably last.
He's made up his mind.
We can go an executive session, or we can just do it here, your choice.
Whatever, whatever's easiest for everybody here, frankly.
I don't think we need executive.
No.
God bless you.
Thank you.
So easy enough. Why the interest in Bike Ped Committee?
I've been a biker for many, many years. I grew up in Pine Bush, New York, and moved to New York, and about 10 years ago moved back here. I now live on 65 Plattekill Avenue. And I do a lot of biking around town. I bike with a lot of folks here in Lake Beck, George Seafreay, oh, a bunch of people here. And I value the, that mode of transportation. I think the town's done a great job so far. There's more to be done, and I'm trying to contribute a little bit, so.
Right?
That's what I'm, that's what I'm.
Is there anything in particular that you'd see that you'd like changed? I mean, because that's the whole point.
I tell you, frankly, I think, I think, you know, connection to Mohawk Preserve, which I think is in the works. I met with the Mohawk Preserve for some fundraising activities and trying to get out to the preserve from the town is one thing. I think the other thing is to tie in the university a little bit more with their participation in biking around the community and sort of kind of tying that in. But from here, the town is such a great spot and the jump-off point to Mohawk Preserve to get there. And honestly, for me, because I'm in business, I'm in finance, I think there's a lot of economic benefit for the town to be had if we embrace biking in a year-round capacity with the community. I think it's a huge untapped reserve that can be, can, it can sort of be generated and for the benefit of the whole town. So that's sort of where my head's at with it all.
Great.
Yeah.
Any other, any questions for Tom?
No.
No?
No.
All right.
I will tell him that if I, that we had a TIC meeting, and Alan Stat was there.
Yes.
And for Bike Ped, and he had such nice things to say about you.
Oh, well, I appreciate that.
So I'll, I guess I'll appoint Mr. Murray and ask the board's approval.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you. It's been you guys, take care.
Now, don't expect to see me on a bus.
I don't believe that.
Okay.
I don't believe that. You're gonna be on one, I can say, I can tell you.
Good one.
Take care, thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
You want to make an announcement?
You want to explain, Dan's in the back room?
Yeah. Why is Dan here? We want to make an announcement that the village, specifically the mayor, has received a notice of the award of the contract with New York City DDP for face-to-exploration for funding in its entirety up to $600,000. And I would ask Dan Marshott, who has, what, what's the appropriate word? Grandfathered or fathered this thing?
Shepherded.
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 Shepherded this through, and it's my understanding in conversation with our attorney that this is probably a record time, and the he, according to Attorney Merzick, not this attorney, but the other attorney, Merzick, that this has been the best negotiation he's ever had with the Department of Environmental Protection. So if you would want to explain the state that we're at with the receipt of this.
Sure.
Notice of award.
Yeah, come on up, Dan.
Sure.
We only bite sometimes.
So the letter that was issued today is referred to as a notice of award. It's a step in our process, but a pretty notable step in our process. It's still in the quote-unquote registration process that is applicable to New York City code, New York City process. We can go through our steps to get it through, the final approval where the check is written, so to speak. This reflects the point at which all the attorneys in the city, our court counsel, New York City Law, is satisfied with the document, and has advised it to go to the comptroller to sign off on it. That's procedural, and it takes a little bit of time, but it's really near, it's going to be final very soon. So when the comptroller signs it, registers it, then after that point, so hopefully, some of the work will be completed. You would present us with an invoice, and put it in the process to get paid, and money will flow. So, yeah, it is a notable and good outcome, very fast. Thanks to everybody here, you know, approving, approving the process, approving Mr. Merzick to sit with us, Joya Cohen, our counsel, too, them getting together, Joya being down and flushing, really working on the internals of our process to help me pressure getting it through.
So I think it would be useful if you said the status of the person who was signing off on this and sending this to us.
Mary Pizan is our chief contracting officer of the agency, so she is in charge of the procurement process and seeing it through to the comptroller at the end when it gets signed. So she's the chief, she's the top of that group. So it's good to have a letter directly from her. And like I said, it still has to go get to the comptroller, but it's very close now. The attorney's counsel has approved it, New York City Law has.
So what do you expect, a few weeks, a few months?
They, the comptroller had, so what we need next, and I think either in that letter or, I think it was in that letter, a request that you sign the documents, send it back to us.
You.
Yeah.
Mary West signed it, right?
Yes.
And our commissioner countersigns, and then that goes to the comptroller. So say that takes a week. The comptroller has up to 30 days, but they've been processing things a lot faster. I can't promise any more than 30 days, but I think the last one we did was two, once it got to their desks, was in the two-week timeframe. It may be a little slower on the holidays, so as soon as we can sign that and get it back to them, it just keeps things moving at the fastest.
We authorized the signature tonight, can you save us the postie?
You can answer right now. Yeah.
I don't think, we need a clean copy.
Yeah, yeah, but, you know, we can get it down there quick. I think, you know, it would be, the sooner the better. You are now, in a parallel path, we have been working to set you up with our payment process, so that checks won't have to be cut and mailed, it's all electronic, that should be all taken care of at this point.
That's great.
Yeah, so, you know, you'll know you get painted before I know, essentially, you know, what's the payment request portion, EFTs over to your checking account, your treasurer, you know? So I think the key now is, you know, if you get some work done before money is available, like if you have a way of funding this ahead of time, which I know you're exploring.
Yes, we have explored, yes.
The minute the comptroller approves, you can present me with an invoice for consideration, process it, and technically, you have up to 90 days to pay it, but that also, you know, depends on me mostly, how quick I can get it in. We could do it a lot better than that.
So I'd like to both thank and congratulate you on.
Thank you.
Because I know that people are watching over your shoulder as well.
And I'll bring that back to Todd West and Paul, who have really been instrumental in making sure this money comes to you guys, supporting this.
I agree with Tom, and I thank you for, I'm not sure I use the word shepherd, but I'd say proddy. Our attorney, your attorney, to get it all done as quickly as possible, so, thank you.
We hope it, we hope that this money results in good news with the effort that is on the table for searching for groundwater, investigating the options, and obviously, some work on looking at your reservoir system existing, too.
So we have to move to authorize?
Well, we need to have a discussion about, of course, we do. I mean, we just got it this afternoon, and I haven't had a chance to read it, and I'd like to. But Dan, I mean, thanks for your update, absolutely.
Okay.
So can we discuss the rest, unless we need Dan here for the conversation?
You might, if you have any questions.
Well, I mean, I can't sit here and read the whole thing right now, so.
We had it for quite a while.
I don't think it's changed since, this is the version that went from Mr. Merzick down into our system a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah.
And then it just kicked back, I don't think anything.
So this, nothing has changed.
Nothing has changed from what we had.
Oh, from what Merzick said.
It said it passed through, I don't know, 20 of our desks.
Oh, okay, I thought this was a revised.
No.
The only thing that's new is the cover letter.
Oh, okay.
Which says, you know, congratulations, you, you know, this is a notice of award, it's up to $600,000.
All right, well, then, never mind.
I would like to move and authorize the mayor to sign the contract.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that's that.
Do we need to?
Thanks.
You're gonna miss us.
I'm sorry?
Let's get back to the agenda, the agenda we had, the additions we'll do at the end.
This goes with it, though, Jason, this is part of the water, isn't it?
It's part of the water.
A different facet.
I don't care if we wait until the end of the agenda to do it.
Okay.
Thanks for grabbing that, too.
You know, it's now on the agenda.
The part where you're gonna entertain, retaining the closet?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, if there's any questions, you know, hang on.
All right, so we've done that. Right?
No, we have seen this before, now, all these water platters are blending together in my head.
The.
Have we seen this before?
We have seen that before, except that there are changes that were redlined at the suggestion of Attorney Merzick. But I believe that they are not substantial.
These are the ones that Merzick wants?
Yes, that he wants. And his last concerns were about financing any activities in advance of the contract. And he is now been in communication with Nancy. Nancy with him. And Nancy is prepared to go forward with borrowing on the basis of this notice of award. She and I discussed today how much. She was thinking that she could borrow against the whole amount, but there's no need, I believe, for that, given the probable speed with which the contract will be completed and registered. And then Dan's, not, not promise. Dan's projected schedule of payments would lead us to think that we would not need to have anywhere near the whole amount. So Nancy thinks that she could satisfy all needs by securing up to $250,000 of the $481,000 for the base contract. And that after that, we'll have sufficient funds to go forward.
Now, remind me, why are we hiring Dave and not the village engineer?
We hired, we hired Dave because when we interviewed him and Dennis, and they agreed that they could work together. And Dave had the more experienced hydrogeologist on his team that we could have greater assurance of a successful exploration. But Dennis will be a subcontractor, has agreed to work with Dave as a subcontractor. Obviously, all of these people are in agreement.
As long as they're literally, you know, in the loop and getting everything.
They will all work, we have, we have three professional teams. D C A, which is Clauzer.
Yeah.
Brenner and Larios. And Chazen and Companies, I think is how it's pronounced. As the hydrogeologist.
No, I'm familiar with Chazen.
And there would be a driller. Our real concern about payment is that we'll have a subcontractor bringing drilling equipment in. If we could get started now, we have a much better chance of completing this whole project before May.
Why is that important?
I forget what the-
As opposed to June or summer time?
May or June, whatever.
Our funding, the $600,000 in our system, is that an annual budget cycle? It's on June 30th? So the I G A has specific provisions in there that the final report can be delivered by the end of June 30th.
Right.
We can likely get an extension, but it's a little difficult. So we'd like to see everything kind of done.
Anyhow, the faster we get going, the better it is for us.
Yeah.
But to answer Jason's question, Tom. Jason, while you were not with us, Joe, Dennis Larios, and Dave Clauzer got together with D E P and they came up with a whole phased proposal.
Yeah, I know, that I figured, yeah.
And I think you saw it.
I did, yeah. I just want to make sure that Brenner and Larios is involved somehow.
They are, I guarantee you-
As the people who've run this system for 50 years, I just want to make sure they're looking over everyone's shoulder.
I guarantee you that they are involved.
Do we need to authorize the $250,000 borrowing tonight? Or do we do that December 11?
Nancy suggested that we could do it tonight.
Okay. I'm going to move to authorize the treasurer.
I forget. She told me what to say.
Oh, she told you what to say. Okay. What am I doing?
Let's move that.
She told me.
I think it would be better.
She said that I should make a motion to authorize the treasurer to go out to borrow sufficient funds to compensate consultants and subcontractors for early work on phase two exploration for $250,000.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And thanks again, Dan.
And what should, did we do the contract with Clauzer?
Might as well do it now, you guys.
Oh, I thought, oh, that was just the borrowing.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So I moved that we, I'm not sure what the right language for this is. We authorize you to-
To sign the contract, yeah.
To sign the contract.
Authorize the mayor to sign the contract.
Contract for engineering services agreement with Clauzer and Company.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye. Now you can go home.
No, he's going out drilling.
I'm not going very far. I will be paying attention to work with you guys.
Put your boots on. We want to know tomorrow.
We're on the other case and I'm not with the city, I'm down with the city.
Thank you again, Dan.
Good to see you again, Dan.
Happy Thanksgiving.
You too, all. Have a nice holiday.
Yes.
All right. So we're at number six on the agenda. Just go back to the beginning and deal with it. This came up, obviously, because of our situation. But in the past, I asked Joe to draft an intermunicipal agreement because in the past, we've had an informal arrangement with the town. When someone was out sick or on the weekend if there was a fire or something in the town, the village building inspector would be called in by the fire chief to make sure the building was sound, et cetera. The same during, when we've had the emergency operations center up and running. One of the things that we always put in the declaration of state of emergency is that our building inspectors have cross-territory. So this is just, I thought it would be good idea to get something down on paper so that when the town needs to have our services and vice versa, we're all agreed on the terms. So Joe, is there, you want to discuss any? I mean, it's a short one.
It's very-
What are the high points?
Yeah.
Is this the intermunicipal agreement?
Yes, it's the number six.
You've got a cover email and then right underneath it is a one page.
Have you discussed this with Joe Moriallo at all?
I have not.
No, this is the first time we've seen it.
Right.
Though I did talk to Susan about it months ago. I'm just getting to it on the list.
Susan said she hasn't talked to you at all about this, Jason.
No, that's incorrect. We spoke when I first called her office to cover for something over the summer. And it was not a long conversation. But, so this would be us talking about it first and then if we'd like the idea, sending it over to the town for their opinion.
Yeah, Susan may mean that I think it's true that she hasn't seen the agreement.
That's what I meant.
Oh, yeah, yeah. No, we talked about the concept. We discussed it.
Oh, yeah. You had told us that when we first had the building inspector problem, that the town wanted to charge too much money and therefore we weren't going to do this.
That may still be true.
Well, I thought we should entitle it "Emergency intermunicipal agreement", somewhere where the term "emergency",
Well, wait. You know, it's not an emergency agreement. It's an agreement to account for-
Emergencies.
Well, or even urgent.
Yeah, I mean, I think-
Or covering vacations. It doesn't have to be an emergency.
Doesn't have to be.
There's mutual aid within it.
Right.
I think what you're getting at, Sally, is that you don't want reaching out to them to be the norm. But on the other hand, I do think you want to give whoever's making this call, if something needs to be done, I think you want to be careful how closely you sort of pigeonhole what constitutes the circumstances in which they could reach out to the town.
And I think it ought to be both ways. I think, and when you have an intermunicipal agreement, I can remember when we were dealing with our meeting. Kathy very nicely covered for the town because Stacy was out of town. And so she dealt, our building inspector dealt with the emergency on the roof over here of the forecast.
Right.
So I think it has to be reciprocity.
Yeah, that's a good point, that right now, we are sort of reacting to a specific situation we find ourselves in now. But if we're going to go to the trouble of signing the agreement, it may be worth talking about it as a mutual aid situation.
Yeah, that's what I was expecting, actually.
Yeah.
That this applies to the town and the village. The town needs our services. And that's why I have an objection to a dollar figure. Because it should be literally quid pro quo.
Right.
We help them, they help us.
And I put it in there because, again, as you all know, and as Jason informed you, there was indication from the town that they want compensation. I didn't put it in there suggesting that that's the right way to go. You know what I mean? I only-
You can do it either way.
Right.
Pay each other.
But why added paperwork?
Well, there's no, unless you know that there's an imbalance in the probable usage.
Right.
Then I would say, don't do it. Don't put a dollar figure in. Unless we know what we're doing is buying services from them that we're not likely to reciprocate.
Right.
And I'm not interested in this building filling or being the way to fill a need that we have right now.
Right. You can do that, of course. It would not be impossible. Towns and villages and villages and cities do do that, where one entity provides services for the other. In the state municipal law, towns and villages recognize that that works well in some circumstances.
But how, yeah.
And I think as an emergency, that they can call on us and we can call on them is very much in order.
I can make those modifications by law.
Tell me what, what we do is unless there's other changes people like, want, take out, maybe take out the dollar figure, add in the emergency thing. And then have a conversation with Moriallo and see what he thinks about it.
Sure.
I think better would be for you to have a conversation with Susan first.
I can do that, too.
Yeah. But I wouldn't take the dollar amounts out because it may be that we want to charge each other.
Well, I would say that we probably, if we know in advance that there's the probability of our using services of theirs on a regular basis, or they using services of ours on a regular basis. If that's the probability, then having the dollar figure in is a good idea. Because we would be taxing our own system. If we're thinking that this is going to be an occasional use and that we're likely to trade uses as we have in the past, is my understanding, then I probably wouldn't put the dollar.
That's what I was saying. If we put in some language, like Sally's suggesting about emergencies or something, we wouldn't need the dollar figure. Because then emergencies are going to be mutual. It'll level the playing field.
Correct.
And then what-
Because it's the same number of people in each jurisdiction.
Correct. The other thing that that might allow you to do is if that was the kind of agreement you signed initially, it would allow you over the course of, let's say, the following year, to actually get data.
You can assess, you can assess.
On what house is working out. But in the meantime, it will be a true mutual aid concept.
But it can't be, it has to be urgent, it has to be an emergency. It can't be, oh gee whiz, Joe wants to open his shop now. And so I'm going to get, and the building inspector's out. And so I'm going to get the town building inspector as a favor to come in. That's not an emergency.
I think that's fine. I would just suggest that that be something you do, you communicate to the building department as sort of an administrative mandate, rather than try to work it into an agreement.
No, no, I'm not saying work it into an agreement. That's why I wanted it to be urgent, or if you like the word "urgent" better, instead of "emergency", that's fine with me.
So what we've agreed is that we'll take out the reference to the dollars and-
Add in something, some legalese about-
What urgent care or whatever that is.
Emergency.
In unusual circumstances or whatever.
Maybe that as to focus.
And Jason can talk to Susan and then you and Joe are going to talk together after they talk.
Yep.
All right.
I'll have it redrafted and to you by Friday. And in the meantime, I'll reach out to Joe and-
I don't mean to draft until-
You want me to talk to Joe first? We'll do all that conversation. Sure, sure.
If he has some common sense that we missed, might as well just add it in.
Yep, okay.
All right, good. So we'll have you back shortly. Remind me, I believe that handicapped parking spaces require local law?
Yes, implemented.
Is there, I mean, I guess is there any objection to Terry and Sue's request?
Where would it be, down by the-
I believe right in front of their house, yeah.
Yeah.
On Prospect?
For two people.
So Joe, I guess, could you draft this local law? Because I don't hear an objection, so.
No.
Joe, you want to draft that short local law for us?
I think it's 68.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll have to have the D P W, because the road narrows there a little bit. We've got to make sure we have the right width for it.
There's no garage, I mean.
Yeah. I know, it's the steps.
You're comfortable that it works there?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I mean, you just-
Yeah, well, I'll have, that's the thing, we'll have Nick or Blue go out and make measures to make sure we have the road width to do it.
Can we have this by the 11th?
That would mean having it by the third for me. Yes.
Okay, so-
Katie, could you just have Nick check the width of the street right there?
We do have to hear it.
We have to set, well, why don't we, why don't we wait? Because make sure that we are physically able to do it first with the road width and have the law in front of us. Because we, once we set a public hearing, we have to have the text of the law available to the public the next day. So we can't set a public hearing tonight.
Nick's going to have to, because Blue's not.
Yeah, I know, Nick's going to do it, yeah. Because we've got the little measuring thing. He's got to walk across the street with it.
Well, pending, pending.
Why don't we just set the public hearing at the 11th? At our meeting on the 11th.
We only have one meeting in December, Jason.
Yeah.
It'll be first meeting in January.
Yeah, so much as to wait till January.
Yeah.
Because we have nothing, because we can't set a public hearing tonight. We have to set it on the 11th.
Yeah.
So, that's fine.
All right. I'll move to set a public hearing.
No, we can't, we can't set a public hearing tonight.
Oh, we can't.
By law. Because we need the text of the law available.
You wouldn't have anything proposed with it in time for the 12th, 11th?
It doesn't matter. It's a local law.
Yeah.
All local laws have to follow that rule. People need to be able to come in tomorrow and get a copy of it, basically. But, so we'll put that on the agenda for the 11th?
Yep. Oh, we're gonna, okay. And then we'll do-
We'll set the public hearing on the 11th.
Fine.
For the first meeting in January, definitely.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Yeah, it'll be moved. You'll have it.
It's just a formality.
Okay.
Yeah, that's where he got me confused. Because you're talking about the third. Okay.
That's just when I got that.
Right, I got it. All right, so we're going to do that. Okay.
All right. I'm going to skip nine. We'll do that last because I think the other things are pretty quick.
We can take it off the table. It is not finalized. It will be finalized for our December 11th meeting.
Joe, I thought you had something finalized.
Joe have worked on a new draft. Joe Moriallo and Joe Ariello worked on a new draft and sent it out yesterday.
Right.
So-
Oh, okay. I thought there was more to discuss than-
Well, I can update you a little bit more. Joe and Joe sent out a new draft yesterday.
I heard.
That's just the first.
Oh, okay.
So I met with Kurt, a couple of us met with Kurt today. He's all with Joe and Joe's update. I briefed Joe, only one Joe, and briefly, on the meeting that we had today. And we will get some more input tomorrow from Kurt and from Kevin Barry.
Okay.
And then we'll send this back to Joe. And then we'll hope to bring this to the board at the next meeting. But we will bring it.
You will bring it.
We will bring it to the board by the next meeting.
What do you, what do you, we have to fill in.
Remember, we had invited the town to join us and then they didn't have quorum for tonight because they're all up in Kingston. I would like to move that the town would be invited to our meeting December 11th to ratify the contract. So-
You mean you want to set a joint meeting?
Yeah. Just one item.
One item.
One item.
One on a agenda. And Katie, you'll send out that?[1587.95]
I highly will. If it's, did you say my motion?
I think Tom seconded.
My second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, Joe, anything to add?
I just want to add that, ask for the direction of the, well, it was actually Katie who sent me the note right after your meeting last week. I redrafted the agreement, got it to Joe by the next day, Joe Moriello by the next day. Joe took some time. He hasn't been quite able to review it. The email that you got was the result of a joint discussion of the...
The chief, the chief like made very clear.
Right. And, and both of us sort of wrote it together. And, and so that's why you got it yesterday. I mean, we did everything we could to make it move as fast as we could, but it was fair for Joe to take his own time.
And we took those comments, and we changed and clarified the contract.
Everybody feels like this has all been done with goodwill and...
Yeah, and that's what I, I just want to say that the, Tom briefed me on their meeting.
Today.
Like, literally, tonight.
Yeah.
So it sounds like Kurt may be okay with the changes that were suggested, but I leave that to you. You said I'll hear from him.
There will be, there will be changes made. I think they will not startle you at all. And then you'll take a look at them to see that there's no, there's nothing that is substantively problematic about this. The issue that we discussed briefly, the insurance issue, for example, I think is now resolved.
But one of the major clarifications that we dealt with was it was very unclear in the contract and the language, not your fault, because I don't think we were clear, how the village is paying the town versus how the bill is being curved.
Right, that's what you guys, I wanted to make clear that that was not clear to make.
It wasn't clear to you, and you made that clear that it wasn't clear, and we clarified it, I think.
Right.
Well, I, well, I don't think...
Well, it doesn't matter. It'll come back to the lawyer's side and back to the board.
Exactly.
Okay.
Next.
But if we can have comments and suggestions for the 11th, so to be made.
All right.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the code revision of the historic preservation.
Second. Any discussion?
Nope.
The Historic Preservation Commission.
To vote on it.
The changes recommended and agreed to by the Historic Commission.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a good one.
Exactly what's in front of us.
Yep. All right. Any other discussion?
You want to discuss it at all?
I want to. I want to.
Oh, yes. Our attorney thinks that other...
At the bottom.
She, it's not recommended.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
That'd be the only thing, and I think they acquiesced in it. I would close it out.
Yes. Okay, is that okay with you, Rebecca?
Oh, yeah, no, absolutely.
All right, so the friendly amendment was accepted. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The housing law, we don't need to take any action, since I've already told Joe and Guy to sit down. They've already begun that process with Rebecca.
But Guy wanted, in his email, he said he appreciated authorization from the board.
Oh, if Guy asked for it, that's fine.
That we appoint him and Joe and Rebecca, too?
Well, she's the liaison to the commission, so, yeah, she would be involved regardless.
The three of them be appointed to a little ad hoc committee to redraw and clarify the housing law.
You all right with that, Joe?
Fine with it, yeah.
So moved? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
I moved it. You're seconding it.
And I'm seconding it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the annexation, Joe, what, just assuming that, I mean, I have no problem with annexing this parcel. I don't think anyone, anyone would. But what legally is involved with this?
So what has to happen is Rich has to make a petition, and you can argue that the, that what is pretty spare documentation here is a petition. I would argue there's some deficiencies that I could talk to Rich about, start making it a formal petition. But Rich has to petition both the town and the village board. Both the town and the village board would have to vote that they, that they find it acceptable to annex it. In a case like this where...
I thought the town doesn't have to vote on annexation into the village.
No, they do.
They have to release it.
Since it doesn't leave the town, that's what, maybe it's just that assumption. It still remains land within the town. It's just also now land within the village.
No.
But I may, I may have that wrong. I thought, I thought just the village had to vote to accept, not the town.
Go back to Floyd Niffen. The big Floyd Niffen parcel was in the town. The town had to vote to allow it to be annexed into the village. And remember, they had stipulations about sharing and putting money in.
It's been so long, I can't remember.
That's why, that's why it's in, what it usually ends up being about, especially when you're dealing with essentially a single owner or only a couple of owners, is generally speaking, the municipality which it's being annexed from, while it, while it has the discretion to say yes or no, there's a case law out there that suggests that if they're on board, the other municipality's on board, meaning they, I'm sorry, the owners, all the owners. It's really just a matter of kind of protecting economic interests at some level, and if they deny it, it's problematic. It can probably be challenged. So now technically, once both boards approve...
He goes to the town first, right?
No, he can go to them simultaneously. There has to be a public hearing in both places. You could hold a joint public hearing if you wanted to.
Well, that's a good idea.
And, and then technically, after the approval by the boards, it's supposed to be actually voted on in an election. But the only people entitled to vote in the election are the people within the district to be annexed, because sometimes... Well, it sounds crazy.
We didn't do that with the Niffens. I can assure you, that was the first thing that happened.
No, but I'll tell you why.
They probably just spilled the beans and said how they vote.
No, I'll tell you why you probably didn't do it.
The trees didn't need to.
It sounds crazy, but sometimes what a municipality is trying to do is to annex, you know, maybe, maybe 32 parcels, like a whole set.
The town was in one of the recommendations.
It acts, right? And so what, what you might, you have a certain percentage of owners. That's one way to do the math. Or there's a different percentage that can also qualify you of the...
Value.
Value that have to sign on in order to bring the annexation petition on. What that means is if you're right, well, you can have an annexation petition in which some of the people in the annexed district don't want to do it.
That's right.
So it sounds crazy, because a lot of times, it's one or two owners, and they're both on board.
But Rich and his cat.
Right, so, so the reason you probably didn't do it in Niffen is that the law does provide that where that is silly, where it is one person, or two, or three, and they're unanimous, they're, by form of a certain procedural rules, you can avoid the election. So...
So can we proceed?
You can proceed. I would like, I don't know that Rich has actually presented this to the town yet.
He hasn't.
I would like to talk to him or his representative. He's got a representative. I don't think he's an attorney. I think he's an agent. I can't remember the guy's name. But I'd like to talk to him about dotting some i's and crossing some t's on an actual petition. It's not complicated, but there are, it's got to be legally sufficient.
What, Jason, when you were away, we threw a trade-off with Rich.
For the bike.
Okay, you know about that.
For the triangle.
At that time, he also asked about this.
Right.
And we didn't do anything because we didn't know what to do, and we were only going to take care of the village.
When he asked me, I told him, just get whatever paperwork your lawyer can to the clerk.
So now, he wants to do this. So this is stage two of what he wants to do.
Yeah, and the idea of what he wants to do, I mean, I shouldn't speak for him, but the, this is a property across the street from his.
That he owns.
And the idea is that it is from a planning perspective, in keeping with the idea of having sort of both sides of the street within that new zoning for that gateway.
And he's been, and he's been waiting for that new zoning, because he wants to build something bigger. So now, it would live in northern Gateway, depending on how it's designed.
But...
So what do we need to do?
Nothing tonight.
You really don't need to do anything.
You need to, Joe, to talk with Mr. Casana to advise him that he needs to petition both the town and the village, and whatever the process is.
As long as you're not acting as Rich's lawyer.
Right. Now, on the contrary, you probably should put up an escrow, not that, not that it's, I mean, there'll be some review involved here, but no, I can't be his lawyer.
No.
And, and I think...
No, you can't, but he needs to be told this is what he has to do.
Yeah, right. Like, like most people, I think Rich is trying to keep costs in check, and I understand that. There are some minimum requirements to get this done.
There's a jury talk with you about the process.
Right.
And you'll do that.
I will do that.
All right. Unless there's anything else?
I can't believe it.
I know.
I moved that we adjourned.
I'll second that.
Wow!
All in favor?
Aye. Stunning.